White Springs, Regal County Meeting to Order. Uh, Tuesday, January tenth, two thousand twenty-three at six thirty P M. Please stand for the, um, invitation and the pledge of allegiance.
Dear the fathers, we come before you today to give you glory and honor. And we thank you now for the town of White Springs, God. Although our faces differ, God, our, our thoughts are different, God, even our ethnicities are different. But the intent of our heart is what we're standing on today. That even together, God, even as we disagree, that we will not be disagreeable. That we will conduct the business at hand, God, to the intent of what we happen to be for all of us. We thank you and we magnify your name for all of law enforcement. We thank you for fire. We thank you for every community member represented here on today. Guidance, God, direct us in the right way that we should go. Take us to higher heights and deeper depths in you. That our glory, God, not be of ourselves, but in you. We thank you and we magnify your name and we give you praise in Jesus' name, issue of the Christ. Amen.
Amen. Of the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wrong call. Mary, Mary here. Nicole Williams, Marita McCowen, Jacqueline Williams, and Anita Rivers is present. We have to continue with the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, and/or amendments to the agenda?
I do have a comment. Um, Councilor Marita McCowen is on the phone. We should need her. Of course, she cannot vote, but I don't know if we're gonna call her present or absent. I guess we do all, we let them know about it.
Yeah, she's, she's absent. She can participate in discussions, but since she can't cast a vote, she's absent.
Okay.
Okay, we'll go on to... Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as it is? Ricky.
I'm here, Derek. Approve the agenda as is.
Can I get a second on the motion?
Nicole Williams, second motion.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Here you vote.
Yes, aye.
Citizens from the floor, I have one, Sharon Shay. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Sharon Shay, ten, six, ten, Wesson Street. What?
I think they let you push in the corner.
Okay.
There you go.
Don't put the U in the corner. Bring it up higher, too. Okay, so Sharon Shay, ten, six, ten, Wesson Street. I have just a couple miscellaneous items. I'd like to recognize Nicole Williams for her work on putting together The Breakfast with Santa. It was a really, um, a good job. Thank you, Nicole. The town and children appreciated it. I'd also like to, um, recognize the town for getting their website up. We do have a question. When will, like, minutes to the meetings be up there and more information? When will be more complete?
Weeks, just a lot of things we have to tweak on it before we begin today.
Well, making progress.
Yes.
Okay, my next has to do with, um, the recycling out back of Town Council. I go there frequently to recycle. And I've actually even called, um, the waste disposal people, asking why they weren't picking it up because it was piling up so high. And they said they're scheduled every two weeks. And so it's like, okay, but they said anytime it gets piled up and overflowing, that they will come out and pick it up. So I think the town really needs to consider, do we need to have it more frequently picked up? Or at least monitor it so that they can be called, even if it involves an additional fee? Because the way it is now, people are not implying to really want to recycle. I've talked to, you know, several people in this city, that town, that don't even really realize there is recycling here. They just think it's a garbage place. And I can see that a lot of citizens also think it's for their garbage. So with that, I'd like to make a recommendation or suggestion that the town instigate some sort of education program for people, such as, don't put your tin cans and your aluminum cans in a plastic bag and then put it in there. Because that, that just files up the whole system. Another thing is that it is not, uh, your yard waste, or your household waste, or your car waste. Because right now, there's things that have been just dumped out there. And so by educating the town and the citizens, that might help reduce the amount of garbage that piles up every single day, every single week. So they could, you could do something in the town water bill and even educate, um, people in other ways. But that's just something I think the town should really look at doing as an education program so that recycling is what it should be. Thank you.
Adrian Sashin, Sash...
My name is Adrian Sashia. I live at one, six, five, six, zero Jewett Street. And I just wanted to say that I've got a quilt for you for the Azalea Festival.
Awesome. Is that for raffle?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Sit right here for me. Thank you.
Can we see it? Yeah, let's see it. She donated a quilt.
Oh, cool.
And I think she must have made it, right?
Did you make it?
Yes.
Wow.
Oh, my goodness.
Nice.
That is beautiful. Beautiful. It's huge, too, yes.
Yeah, I'll put a queen or a king.
Yeah.
Very nice. Thank you. That could be a great raffle present.
Did we come up with a price around that?
No, it was just, um, like, bedded on.
Oh, yeah, that's what we did.
Get a house.
And the gentleman still talks about...
Um, shams.
Oh, they're little shams.
To go with it.
Oh.
You did it up.
We might have to say it.
Yeah, I would say that.
Put that out on the website.
Thank you, thank you. When we start our advertising for the Azalea Festival, we've, we've got to do some... Anyway, get that...
What size is it?
If you put it one way, it will be a queen and you can put it up over your pillows. If you run it the other way, it will cover a king's side bed.
Thank you so much. Okay, any presentations? None. Approval of the minutes from the December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two Town Hall meeting?
I, Jacqueline Williams, move that we approve the minutes from the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two Town Hall meeting?
Can I get a second on the motion?
I'm here, Derek, second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, there is no old business. New business, um, May Day, twenty twenty-three. We had a meeting last Thursday. Everybody that's here on the council tonight was there.
You were on the phone.
Oh, yeah. You were on the phone. We had a meeting, um, few people in the community came. We just kind of brought out some ideas, gave people, um, like a DJ. We need a DJ. We need, um, performers. And, um, so we just kind of threw it out there today, where to get your folks in by this Friday, as to how much they were charged for those services. So we can pretty much come together and decide what... Um, because there was no special events committee, which special events is never planned on May Day anyway. May Day has always been planned by the community. And so being that the community kind of fell through last year, and we decided to budget more for May Day. In the budget, we decided that we would plan the May Day event. The Azalea Festival, pretty much the same thing, because there was no special events committee at the time. So we've already started the planning process on that. We decided for people to know to put out bids for that also, for entertainment and, um, DJing. That type of stuff. We'll also have the vendors for both events. And so that's pretty much where we are. We'll meet again next Thursday, the ninth... Nineteenth. Um, at six o'clock here at Town Hall. It'll be another community meeting. It's not a council meeting or anything like that. It's just a community meeting where we can get input from other people.
What's the, the date for May Day?
Um, the Azalea Festival is May, April fifteenth, and May Day is May twentieth. The Azalea Festival, we plan to have it at the same spot, at the Tourism Center on the corner. May Day is always held at the Carver, Old Carver School on Mel Street.
Thank you.
And we didn't get, as far as like vendor fees, nothing like that. We didn't get that intense. We just kind of threw it out there that what we were looking for. Planning and zoning board of applications, I have them here. Planning and zoning, the applications are Conja Brown, Barbara Fryfield, Gretchen... Few short? Annette Hutchinson, um, Michael Hutchinson, Madonna Gardner, Ashley Bryant, Cheryl McCall, Randolph Williams. And so if I can get an approval from the, I mean, a motion from the council to approve the, uh, planning and zoning committee consisting of those people.
I, Jacqueline Williams, move that we accept the application for planning and zoning for the applicant names you just read.
Can I get a second on the motion?
I'm here, Derek, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. 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 Any opposed? Okay, special events. Um, I have applications with Tawana Gil, Bruce Whitten, Elon Bryant, Ashley Bryant, and Robert Strong. Can I get a motion to approve those, um, names that I called for the special events committee?
I, Jacqueline Williams, move that we approve the special events committee applicants, all the names just read.
Can I get a second on that motion?
I'm here, Derek, second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We'll go on to... I don't have a second. Um, yeah, I know the, um... Committees and the town staff and committees. Department Administrative Comments. So any comments from the public first? Anyone have anything to add to that? Number one. Now, we don't hold your peace. Okay, Mr. Warren.
Ma'am, when I make my comments, you're gonna probably wanna kick me out of your meeting, which is fine. I leave, I don't need your officers to touch me. But I'm gonna say what I'm gonna say, because I, I drove all the way just to say it. I ain't as professional as some of y'all. And so, um, but I'm a very loving and loyal person, uh, to people that I consider to be a friend. And Nick, I've never considered anything less than being a friend as a matter of fact, a sister. But I just want to let you know in your face that you're a disloyal piece of shit. So you can keep that to me.
I appreciate your comment and thank you so very much.
Yeah.
How've you been?
All right, um, Town Manager?
Okay, um... Only thing I have right now is the, um, twenty, uh, twenty twenty-three holiday, um, observance that we, that we have for... Oh, resolution? I'm letting the attorney handle the resolution. So, um, he can do that after. These are the days that we have for the holidays. They're basically the same as last year. End of the year before, they just, of course, find out with the dates of this year coming up.
What are the three hundred thousand dollar grants? Want to just...
The grant? That go, that's in, that's with the grant at Mid Tower, um, in the...
That's not...
Mid, Mid Tower grant. That's with the water grant that we're trying to do, freshwater grant at the three hundred thousand. That's a part of that grant that we applied for. It wasn't something that the government gave us separate. We applied for that grant. And the other department, um, issue that I have, I'll let, um, it's something that me and Steve both will talk about when we get to the fire department. Matter of fact, I'll let Steve handle that.
He's next, anyway.
He read, he read.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm ready or not. Well, as of today, everything at the fire department is operational. Even the fire department, even though against some people say there's no fire department, there's been a fire department for about four months. But it's taken me this hope this long to get everything operational. Generator, heaters, trucks. We did have the backflow issue when it froze. So we did got that, we got that fixed, so everything's good there. And, uh, did call some people that Sanitia sent me, um, that wanted to be on the fire department. They chose to go somewhere else. Actually, one guy said he's gonna work for Gainesville Fire Department. I'm like, that's great. So I talked to him to try to reach out to get some more people. I talked to, uh, Jeff Crawford, who's the chief of White, of Columbia County. He said they do not offer a Fire One class. He said the only people that they do are the people that actually are auxiliary for them, that they will, uh, take the online class. And then when it's time to do their, their, uh, sign-offs, they'll do that for their own auxiliary, but they do not teach class to the public. I talked to Henry Land, sent Henry Land, uh, information and asked him about the firefighter-one class for the volunteers. And he told me, his, or his email come back, said that basically they're free, but it requires fifteen students and, uh, to actually do the class, but they're not offering any classes right now due to the fact that they are trying to start their fire department. I checked with Jacksonville Fire Department, which is, they teach a class in Jacksonville. And, uh, the class is firefighter-one class, costs roughly eleven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And then on top of that, you've got criminal background, you've got drug screen, you've got the S E, F, S C J application fee. So that brings it up. But what I did find interesting, that a lot of these programs now, even Marion County, which is Ocala, you have to be an E and T before they even sign you up. So that's part of, that's part of an issue right now, but when they're offering classes, it is a Fire One and E and T class together in combination. Marion County, which, uh, I talked to the fire college, and I sent them a snapshot of the picture that Ms. Williams is saying, says four hundred and twenty-five dollars for a class. She said, no, that is not correct. And she said, where is it? So I sent her screenshot to show her, hey, it's showing this. And she says, we wish it could be that, but it's not. The class in Marion County for the combined E and T firefighter-one class is forty-one hundred dollars and twenty, twenty cents. Along with that, that is just tuition only. That's not for books. Books are eighty-seven dollars. The guidebook is thirty-five. Uh, you get a CPAC test, which is a hundred and forty-five dollars to see if you're even able to get into the class. You've got fingerprints and application fees, which the other classes, anybody else, you're gonna have to do your, uh, fingerprints along the way. Uh, and then that is not even including the, uh, E and T books. So we're just not gonna, we don't skip that far, because it's just don't pertain. Let me see here. And then firefighter-one class is two hundred and six hours to be free firefighter-one. But along that, you still have to have your E and T class. So the total of that is three hundred and ninety-eight hours to have your training for your firefighter-one, per the state now. Uh, I know they do firefighter-one, uh, like I say, Henry does it. But then, you know, some people say they're not certified. Well, they're firefighter-one, but they are not in compliance, which compliance means, yeah, you're totally certified. So the word compliance and certification kind of are the same thing. It's just you have firefighter-one and you have firefighter-two. Presently, we have three firefighter-one, I mean firefighter-twos. They are myself, uh, myself, Lockwood, and Baron Warner, and they also are paramedics. So we're pretty much covered with that. Now, we've got a small, you know, we're trying to rebuild this department. And, uh, you know, there's people that say that, uh, you know, harassment, you don't want to be harassed. Well, there is another way of being harassed, the same way. I feel like the fire department gets harassed pre-regular as well. And we're trying to keep positive attitude. There was, uh, myself and Mr. Lockwood worked today. He was here, we're here at eight o'clock in the morning. He went home at five, uh, this past weekend. It was not the weekend of the mud bog. But, uh, Friday, there was a, a gentleman worked twenty-four hours that night, that day, along with Lockwood, and the other guy worked an additional twelve hours on Saturday. So we've got people putting in hours, we just have to have people. And I don't mean just bodies. We have to have people that have certifications, because we can't afford to send somebody to school. The class in Jacksonville's Mondays and Fridays, eight to five. Yes, the best bet would be, uh, Henry Land, but there's not fifteen people that want to do it, uh, around locally. So, but that's what he said as far as his, the communication I had with Henry. And then I'll...
So right now, as far as staff, I know we got Adam, Derek.
Myself, and I've got one that I'm still trying to figure out about the fire gear.
Okay.
And along with all the stuff going with the county, it's not likely that I'm gonna get to swap fire gear, trade a fire gear. So that's a kind of on hold right now for that one, which is, uh, Mr. Tanishon. And Mr. Tanishon actually was a, uh, he was one of my instructors when I started E and T school. So he's been around for a long time. And he, he, he worked for Lucha County. So I'm trying to get people in here, certified people and qualified people, and that's what we have right now.
They work, some work here, she's full-time and where...
Yeah, uh, Lockwood worked for City of Lake City. Baron worked for Century Amulets. And, uh, Charles actually is doing some teaching Fire One, uh, Fire One, Fire Two at the college. So he's doing, he's making, he's making good money out there, so I can't hardly draw him here, you know? But, uh, and then I can't, you know, if he's gonna work one or two days a week, it's hard to afford forty-five hundred dollars for fire gear.
No, but that's good that you have some active certified fire.
Yeah, we have some active certified, you know? I mean, I get it, there's things that happen where I'm not always here. And there's things like that are gonna happen. You can't, what if, you can what if all day long if you want to, but that just don't work. I know, uh, I did talk to... I talked to, uh, Jennings Fire Department today. Jen, no municipality has a contract yet with the county. County pretty much says, we're not, we don't know what we're gonna do yet. I talked to Jennings today, and Jennings says that they are only running the city limits, period. They're not running outside the city limits, don't make no difference what it is, there's no contract. And like today, he said there was four people there, but he just said, uh, and there was a brush fire endangering the house. It's just, uh, you know, some fire departments win. But for them, they're just holding their ground and saying, if you're not gonna pay us, we can't go. Also, they're going back to volunteer fire status in, end of the month, I believe. So the fire chief says, hey, I'm out of the job. So, you know, we go up and down, and that's why this is, I guess, the fire situation in Hamilton is kind of real sensitive. It's, it can be explosive, it's, we just can't get a grip on it.
I think we have like maybe the most stable department right now. And I got a call from, um, Mr. Gooden today, and he said that they can't come up with an agreement with the towns, so they're asking the towns to submit something to them.
Yeah. Jasper said that they, they don't have a contract, that they are still running out in the county. But they do their billing, uh, per unit, whatever they run. They run three people or an engine or whatever. So it's kind of at the FEMA rates of what a fire engine would cost, that's what they bill the county. As far as them getting, uh, money or not, I don't know. But Jennings, I mean Jasper did go up to that call today and crossroads. So there are other departments, but, um, we're, we're still in the, kind of the same boat as everybody else. We don't, they're not giving us no money. All they're doing is telling us what they're gonna take away from us if, if we don't do it. I looked into Sue, I looked into, uh, dispatch, not dispatching, but the way it's dispatched. Hamilton County will dispatch regardless. There's e-dispatch, I know you've heard about it, and there's also reporting. Well, some of the stuff they said, listen, if we don't sign a contract, uh, we're gonna take that away from you. Well, okay, but we can still do it. So we can be self-contained. However, I don't think we're gonna be running the county. We don't, it, it's not like we're not doing it. We're, we're still doing what we gotta do, even though we have, it's what's been three months now, there's no contract signed. We're still doing, but we haven't gotten no money from the county. We've received nothing. And they're wanting us to, you know, this is, this has been going on for months. So, you know, it's... I don't know what to do with it, you know? I, I can't move, you know, I always call, I tell Vanessa, it's like cutting pie, and this is the piece that you get. Well, this don't work this time, it can't. Uh, and we're trying to get people in here. And that's really all I have. I mean, I, I don't want to be fussing, but everybody i- is there, you know? I've been there all day, I'll be there tomorrow, I'll be there Thursday, you know? I'm not there twenty-four hours a day. And the budget's not gonna allow that, even if we get forty thousand from the county. We're just gonna try to get as many people as we can.
Okay, that's it? All right, um, right, yes.
I wasn't paying attention, I missed the public comments section. If there's a time that I can speak, uh, with public comments, um, even though it's passed, I'd love to do that. My name's Derek.
Okay, you can go in there now, before we move on to the Town Attorney.
Thank you, I'm sorry about that.
Okay. State your name and address, please.
My name's Garrett Snead, eleven sixty-eight Southwest Main Boulevard, Lake City. Uh, I just had a few comments that I wanted to make. You know, I know this is White Springs, I've never been here before, uh, as far as to a, a meeting, but recently in Lake City, you know, the mayor has said they basically have been the laughing stock for a while, um, as far as Lake City goes when it comes to public perception. I'll just say recently that with Hamilton County and the incident that happened at the basketball court, you know, and with the sheriff, and the way that that was handled, the way that those comments were made, I understand that that is county, but White Springs, I believe, is still in the county. And as many public records requests that I personally have put in to hear that they have no policy, me, myself, I'd be scared to come to, to White Springs or to any part of the county when they don't have policies, you know, when it comes to excessive force, policies when it comes to cameras, and to public records, as well as a lot of other things that they don't seem to have a policy for. So I don't know if you guys have any influence over that, but they govern, as far as I know, the county as a whole. So I would hope that, you know, you guys make some connection or some comment to them. I mean, I've made my own, and that goes so far, but they just really are operating with no policies and kind of like a nineteen sixty, uh, no computers, no nothing, and kind of get to do what they want. As well as a lot of the officers that are up there have either been rejected or passed around from other counties that now work there. You know, I don't know how that, they were vetted. You know, if somebody was fired from a different county, they seem to go to Hamilton County. And they seem to get away with a lot of leniency by not having a lot of the policies in place that would protect or enforce, you know, complaints when it comes to, uh, an officer doing something wrong. But I also want to add that anybody that saw the video about Mr. Warren being accosted, you know, at the basketball game, there's not one time in any of those videos that his hands were clenched around the officer, his gun or anything. And the video that I clearly saw frame by frame, and I slowed it down, there was never one time that he clenched, never one time he bear hugged at all, when I think he probably had the right to do so as he was falling to the ground. Including, there was another officer that actually had his hand on an individual's gun. So I, that's the part from the county that I wanted to speak to. As far as the, um, town itself, um, just had a few comments about, um... You know, things that are said in public by council members, you know, people pay attention to what everybody says, and whether it's right, wrong, or indifferent. But one thing that I want to point out is, if there's anybody, in my opinion, that says that that video was wrong as far as what actions were done by Mr. Warren, I don't know what video that they were watching, just plain and clear. And if they say anything different, or if they support the sheriff in what was done, then shame on you, as far as anybody that has said that. I'm sorry, what was that?
I didn't say anything, I just laughed.
Okay, well, maybe I'll give you something to laugh at. Is your name Nicole Williams?
Yes, my name is Nicole Williams.
So when somebody gets hired...
So was all of this directed toward me, this whole scenario you just went through?
Oh, no, no, I'm not done.
So how did you just pick out, or is your name Nicole Williams that all there?
Well, because you laughed, so I wanted, I didn't see a nameplate.
I laughed because first of all, if I'm not mistaken, this is an open investigation, and I don't think y'all should be discussing it. Just like we couldn't discuss about the hate group that came to White Springs, nobody on the council wanted to discuss it. I don't think this should be discussed here either, because this is not the place for it. What you need to talk to would have to be in Jasper, to Sheriff Reed, because we have nothing to do with what the sheriff department does. So I feel like your comments are inappropriate anyway.
All right, well, I'll, I'll try to make them more appropriate, if that's okay.
Do it, but your time's not up.
Okay, so, so anyway, uh, as far as when somebody gets hired, whether it's the sheriff's department or the city council, I don't know what the qualifications specifically are, but, you know, if somebody, and we had this in, in Lake City, where somebody, you know, was running for council, they had a pretty severe background when it came to a criminal background, credit background, bankruptcies, and...
So once again, you pulling up the stuff they put on Facebook about me. So once again, you pulling up the stuff they put on Facebook about me. Everything you saying is something that was put on the post.
Well, let me ask you, did you, I mean, you wanted to address me, did you, have you filed, have you filed for bankruptcy twice? So, so if...
First of all, this whole conversation is inappropriate. But this has nothing to do with the town or anything to do with the town or the town's business.
Well, you work here.
Okay, so this is directed to me, so go ahead, let me hear what you got to say.
Well, you're, you're addressing backwards to me, so you work here, so would you hire somebody that has got a pretty good criminal background, adjudicated guilty, writing bad checks, bankruptcy, whoa, 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 I'm not, I'm not done.
You're talking about me, and you're not gonna stop this conversation just because he's talking about me.
Nicole, I have stopped the conversation.
It doesn't matter, y'all are saying, let him say something that would...
But it's stopped, he's not talking anymore, and you shouldn't either.
But, that's okay, I got my point, I got my time, I can leave my comments.
So I'm done?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, so Joe?
Yes, ma'am.
Since Ray is not here for the...
Yeah, I'm not gonna talk to my utility. Pardon me. At the request of staff, I've shown you guys resolution number twenty-three dash zero five, that I would ask you to consider this evening. By way of background for the benefit of those here with us tonight, your staff have been subjected to grotesque treatment, inexcusable comments, repeated comments, and harassment. And to your staff's credit, they said, "We don't want to disregard or ignore these people without, you know, some backup from the council." So we had some conversations, and this resolution is the prompt of that. What I'd like to do is read it in the record before y'all vote on it. Resolution number twenty-three dash zero five, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of White Springs, Florida, providing for a harassment-free workplace for employees of the town and providing for effective data. Whereas the adoption, the adoption of policy prohibiting the harassment, prohibiting the harassment governing of the employees of the town is necessary to the orderly and efficient operation of the town and Town Council. And whereas the harassment by citizens of employees of the town by reason of said employee's race, color, national origin, religion, gender, sexual orientation, disability, pregnancy, age, political affiliation, military status, or any other characteristic protected by federal, state, or local law is an increasing problem, causing some employees to consider leaving their employment with the town. Whereas the Town Council is authorized by Section two point zero six B six of the Town Charter for the Town of White Springs, Florida, the council, quote, "The council shall have the power to create, establish, and ordain such ordinances, bylaws, and rules of order as they may deem necessary." And whereas the Town Council is authorized to adopt such rules by resolution pursuant to Section two point oh eight of the charter. Now, therefore be it resolved, Section one, the recital set forth above are incorporated in our findings of fact. Section two, the town, including its elected officials, appointed officers, and all employees shall follow the town's anti-harassment policy. Section one general, it is the policy of the Town of White Springs, Florida to maintain a work environment free from verbal or physical conduct that unreasonably harasses, disturbs, or interferes with an employee's work performance or that creates an intimidating, offensive, or hostile environment based on one's race, color, national origin, religion, gender, including gender identity or gender expression, sexual orientation, disability, pregnancy, age, political affiliation, military status, or any other characteristic protected by federal, state, or local law. This policy prohibits harassment that impacts the workplace, no matter where or in what medium or form it occurs. Examples of prohibited conduct include, but are not limited to, unwanted physical contact or offensive contact of a sexual nature, including flirtatious advances or propositions, verbal harassment about an individual's gender or sexual interest, sexual innuendos, and offensive jokes or descriptions of personal sexual conduct, demeaning, degrading, or insulting comments about a person's physical appearance, or any characteristic enumerated above, displaying photos or other media which are demeaning, insulting, intimidating, or sexually suggestive, and demeaning, insulting, sexually suggestive, or otherwise offensive written, recorded, or electronically transmitted messages. And again, those are just examples, they're not an exhaustive list. Section two, responses to harassing behavior, and this, ladies, is what your employees were particularly concerned about. Under no circumstances shall an employee be required to endure harassment by other employees, elected or appointed officers of the town, citizens of the town, or any under, any other individual coming into contact with an employee by reason of his or her employment with the town. Employees facing harassment shall, one, always be empowered to discontinue conduct with an individual engaging in harassing behavior or other behaviors in violation of this policy. Where an individual has repeatedly harassed an employee or employees, the employee facing continued harassment may avoid further contact with that individual. That language is important, because if you have someone who consistently and repeatedly is harassing your employees, they need to be able to preemptively stop communicating with that individual. Because, because again, just the fact that the communication is creating a harassing, harassing atmosphere because of the modus operandi of the individual. Two, the employee must immediately report harassment or other violations of this policy to the town manager, except that if the violation is alleged to have been committed by the town manager, then report the violation to the mayor. The town manager or mayor shall investigate the alleged harassment. If the allegations are against another employee or an elected or appointed officer of the town, and if the allegations are supported by the investigation, then the town manager or mayor shall ensure appropriate discipline and corrective measures are taken. Three, employees and their supervisors shall document events of harassment to the best of their ability, including but not limited to sending an email to the town manager detailing the circumstances of the harassing behavior. Four, where an individual has exhibited a pattern of harassment, the town manager shall cause the same to be reported to local law enforcement or refer the matter to the town attorney to pursue an injunction or other legal remedy. Five, it shall be the duty of the town manager to ensure that the town maintain a work environment free from harassment of all kinds and respond expeditiously to any alleged, any allegation of harassment reported. And that's the entirety of the resolution. So what we're trying to create here is empowerment by the council directly to the employees and manager to on a daily basis, you're telling these employees that you've got their back on this issue. And you're empowering them to govern their daily work so that they can be free of harassment. Because again, this is not a unique policy to the town. This is a policy that's adopted by governments all over the state of Florida. And it's something that's imperative if you want to maintain your workforce. Because it is a, a growing problem. So if there's any questions about it, I'll be happy to address them. But we are asking for adoption of twenty-two-three dash oh five.
Does anyone on the council have any questions for Mr. Foreman?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Foreman, if I'm not mistaken, I thought Rhett and several years ago, they put something like this into place about the conduct in council meetings, how, and how you fuck conduct yourself at town hall. So it should some, already, something should already be in place with this, just like with the other stuff that we discussed earlier.
And, and again, I'm not aware of there being another policy.
But it was, I remember that.
But this wouldn't create conflict. This is just, you know, this is just telling the staff that they have the ability to avoid the harassment. If we identify another policy, I'll, I'll review it for harmony. But again, I don't have access to a policy that already says that.
I believe the policy she's speaking on is when they did it for actual council meetings.
Okay.
The, the, the way they conduct, the way they, the citizens conducted themselves against the council.
Not just the citizens, I think we need to put something in place for elected officials, employees, as well as the citizens.
Yeah, and this one does, this one, this one addresses all categories of individuals who interact with the employees. The rules of decorum and conduct, we did that thirty years or so ago. But again, if there are other personnel policies out there, you'll have discussed that in the last few days.
Right.
We do need to find, but I think thus far, we've not had any luck locating.
Yeah, it was the decorum from what I...
Well, those are, we...
Well, I mean, the one that she's speaking on, it was nothing about...
Fred was the attorney, no, we the current, uh, Fred.
Well, we definitely have some investigation to do to find those pre, pre, pre-existing policies, but I just, I haven't seen them yet, I don't have any...
All right, can I get a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-three dash oh five?
I drop on wheels, move that we adopt resolution number twenty-three dash oh five.
Can I get a second on the motion?
I'm here, there is a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And then, Mayor, I promised I would mention this for the folks in attendance. We had intended to do first reading on three different ordinances tonight. My end of year schedule got really jammed up. I think we had some issues with getting the new utility rates. And then the clerk took a well-certification. So the advertising that would have been necessary for that first reading didn't occur. But none of that's been forgotten. The closure for Weston Street ordinance has already been finished. I believe I circulated that. We have the smoke-free Hamilton County as well as the utility regulations. So they're still on, on deck, but just with the end of the year being the way it is every single year, those things didn't get done in time.
Okay, okay. All right, does the council have any comments, Mayor?
No.
Nicole?
Um, I do. Well, no, Mr. Foreman, you think, I just need to wait for what we discussed earlier, or is now the appropriate time to bring it up?
Uh, so...
I mean, not to make a decision tonight, but to bring it up to give people, the council time to think about what it is that we need to do and what needs to be put in place.
Yeah, so it, it's appropriate in any public meeting to have a policy discussion, right? About the issue that I think you're gonna talk about. And I think the more discussion happens of that. So if, if tonight's the night to start having the conversation, then tonight's the night to start.
Okay.
And then the council can decide what kind of action they want to take based on that discussion.
Okay. I think that we need to put a social media, implement a social media policy into, it was already one done in twenty-sixteen, but like he said, we can't find a lot of this stuff. But I think we need to come up and redo it again, because of some things that have been put on Facebook and some of the comments that have been made by employees and elected officials. And I just feel like to safeguard the town, we need to go ahead and put something in place now.
Make them more feasible and fair.
And as you stated earlier, it's not uncommon to have this, because most municipalities already have it in place anyway.
I don't care about what Jordan made, Jordan made that.
You need to have it, go ahead, leave like you did Joe, guys. You need to have it, leave like you did Joe.
It sounds like he's trying to...
No, no one is speaking right now, she's, um... Council has a floor, so no more not personally, you'll be asked to be removed.
To, to address the, the comment that she just made, so there are such things as social media policies and other restrictions. It's just a fact, right? Now, what the scope of those social media policies might be is, is up to the council. First Amendment implications can occur, but because you're generally talking about an employment context or a context in which someone's voluntarily placed themselves, you are allowed to impose restrictions on speech, okay? So whether or not you choose to do that, though, is entirely up to the council, right? So it's, it's, it's a pure policy decision on that front. And if you guys were to say that you did want to go forward with something like that, then it would be incumbent on me to go craft something and bring it back and keep you within the limitations of the law. There are First Amendment implications, but they're not as clear-cut as if you said, nobody can say, you know, nobody in the town can say "ass," you know, without just, you know, not like shot and fire in theater, but you say, "Nobody can say anything bad about the mayor." You know, that's clearly a First Amendment violation. But if you say, "Hey, our employees are gonna be expected to conduct themselves in a certain way, and you set certain parameters, as long as it passes what's called the rational basis test, you'll be okay there." But again, I tell every government I represent, your first option is always to do nothing. So you, you have all those options available to you. I do agree that if there is an outstanding policy, and I know there's some difference of opinion about whether or not that ever got passed, or whether it exists.
I never know if it exists, because when I was an employee here, someone reported that I had put something on Facebook and Spacey tried to, you know, get, get me after, and there was a policy, so...
Right.
But that's when they said she came up with the policy.
I was, I worked here until twenty-seventeen, and there was never a policy put on place.
I don't know, I just know I had gotten, I was told that in twenty-sixteen, they redid it.
I was an employee in twenty-sixteen, and there was never a policy.
Right, and you were, and that was one part of the reason they said they did, because of the comment you made about people receiving food stamps and stuff during a hurricane.
Right, I did that.
Okay.
As an employee.
Right, and that's when they said, that's when I was told by three former councilmembers and an employee that she implemented that policy then.
I'm not arguing about it.
I'm not arguing, I'm just saying.
I mean, you just signed it, and if it's there, it is there.
If not, we still need to come up with one to safeguard the town.
Right, and so the, the reason that governments adopt these policies is a, a good point that you just made. I don't know if you realized you were making it. Without a policy, you don't have any enforcement authority, a council member, right? So it's, it's really a question, do, do you want to get into it, and do you want to be governing it and regulating it? And it's, that's the policy decision that you guys have to make. And so if, if the council already has an idea of what it wants to do, or if you have any direction you want to give, you can give it, you can take all this discussion under advisement, we can move it to another agenda for further discussion. It's really, it's up to you guys to, to, to give some direction or make some disposition so that we'll know where to move forward.
Is that all?
Oh, yeah, that would it.
Uh, that's it for the meeting? Meeting is adjourned, send a team DM.